Asking for synonymous intuition in this capable council. We bless you for the representation and the voice of the constituents in this capital of dreams. As we convene, dear God, let us hold true to Isaiah nine and six, that the government should be upon your shoulder. So let every concern to be determined on this agenda in accordance with your discussion, decision, deliberation, and destination, that the steps of Montgomery will not only manifest dreams, but obedience in your will. In the name of he who was and is soon to come, our majestic higher power, we pray, let every heart say amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please rise to the page.
(inaudible)
Counselor, any motion on the work session minutes for the fourth of May?
Move to adopt.
Any motion to adopt, on the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Any motion on the regular council meeting minutes for May the fourth?
Mr. President, move to adopt.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, you up?
Thank you.
Good evening.
I want to thank everybody for being here. Certainly want to thank all the members of the public for being here. Probably one of the larger crowds we've had in some times. I'm glad that we have interest here for what we're doing. I want to thank the council for the good work they've been doing as well. I was going to start with the community heroes and a few people that we wanted to recognize, but I'm going to hold that until the end, just to make sure we can acknowledge those that we want to acknowledge. So if you can, let's go ahead and start with the financial update. As promised at our last council meeting, I want to brief you on what the city's projected financial position is expected to be at the end of fiscal year based on the April 30th data. On March 26th, the city completed a massive restructuring of more than $93 million in debt. This restructuring consisted of four separate bond issues from previous years that had higher interest rates than those in today's market. Additionally, the city sold new municipal bonds amounting to $50 million. This transaction in total constituted a sale of more than $143 million. The bonds sold at a premium, meaning that the bonds were sold above, purchased above face value, which is good news for us. There were 40 institutional investors that told the Lord as to buy bonds from the city amounting to more than $1 billion. This definitely reflects the strength and confidence that investors have in the city and our financial standing. The cash flow savings from this recent restructuring of debt will allow the city to pay off some short-term debt and thereby lower total debt payments in future years. Now you can go to the first slide. The budget to actual projection of revenue on the screen reflects slightly more than $7 million above budget at fiscal year-end, which is primarily due to sales and use taxes trending up during the first half of the year. This tax is trending more than 10% above the previous year, which is an indicator that citizens are putting their stimulus dollars back into the economy. Again, great news for us. Budget to actual expenditures are projected to be underspent by nearly $5 million due to savings from the restructuring of long-term debt and the efficiency of operations by our city departments. And I certainly want to thank our finance director, Betty Beville, for giving us great advice in terms of how we've approached our financial picture over this last year-plus. Now, if revenue remains stable based on April's data and departmental, non-departmental expenditures are underspent, it is projected that the city could possibly add $5 million to our reserves. That would be awesome for us to have and would be a great position for us to be in, particularly given where other municipalities are at the same juncture. Consequently, this would aid significantly in getting the city's reserves closer to its goal of having no less than 20% of the general fund budget in savings within a few years. So again, we look at the potential to add an additional $5 million to the reserve is not so much for us to go out necessarily and burn, but it is just to add to our overall reserves to try to get to that 20%. And that in itself will be a great position for the city to be in. That's going to conclude the financial update. Now I want to move on to some good news, and that is the addition of 15 new pre-K classrooms. Our outreach over the past two years to local childcare programs about the opportunity to apply for state pre-K funding has borne fruit. Fifteen additional pre-, fifteen additional first-class pre-K classroom grants were announced today from Montgomery County. That's 15 of just 135 new classrooms statewide. So we're doing a fantastic job on a proportional basis of getting our fair share of educating our youngest kids and giving them the opportunity they need to get started at an early, at an early level and one that will prepare them for kindergarten and obviously through their elementary schools and there beyond. We think this would be a tremendous addition and tremendous competitive advantage for our community, as this is one of the key indicators of educational success going forward at the kindergarten level and certainly past third grade. Now, there will be a second round of classrooms announced before the school year begins, so we still have time to do more outreach and expand access to Alabama's first-class pre-K program for more Montgomery children. Montgomery County, Alabama first-class pre-K by the numbers, 270 additional children will be served. Total classrooms for 2021 and 2022 will be 82, with a total children to be served at 1,476. So when we think about the new percentage of four-year-olds that are served, that's a outstanding 48%, and that truly, truly is good news for our community, is good news for our education system, and is good news for the parents and the children that are involved and those that have been looking for first-class pre-K opportunities right here in Montgomery and in central Alabama. Now, don't, don't, don't all be too quiet now. When you have 48% of, of pre-K classroom, that, that's not an easy thing to get. There are a lot of communities that, that will dream of that, and that, that has a direct impact on our education and our system here. And so again, for those that see some of the, the dollar signs that we've gotten both from our amendment 382 and our increase in taxes, as well as what we're getting through the American Rescue Plan, this combines with that, puts our students in a great position to be successful. And this allows us really as a city to have a smarter, better talent pool and workforce, and it shows the investment that we have even with the youngest children in our community. So I want to thank all of those who helped assist in this endeavor. It's one of those things that, you know, you, you may not see or you may not hear a lot about, but getting kids ready for kindergarten is one of the biggest challenges that many communities have around this country because of lack of funding for pre-K programs. So to have 48% here in, in our community is a strong testament to those providers here and a strong testament to those that are looking to really get out on the front end of our educating our kids here in Montgomery. Now, I'll move on to National Public Works Week, and what we'll be doing with National Public Works Week is we'll be joining communities across this country to celebrate all of those who help with our infrastructure and help really on the front lines of bringing government services to our residents. In doing so, we are honoring and spotlighting our team members who focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital and important to making Montgomery a sustainable and resilient community. Their work is essential to keeping us safe and enhancing our quality of life and quality of place. We're proud of everyone from engineering to sanitation to street maintenance to traffic and engineering itself. And I certainly want to give congratulations to Wesley Cox, the city's director of traffic engineer, who serves as president of the American Public Works Association Alabama chapter. So congratulations Wesley on that leadership position, and thanks for representing the city of Montgomery so well. In Montgomery, the RSA Tower and downtown fountain have turned orange to recognize our public works professionals. Now, on to our community heroes. This is one of the better parts of my message, and that is recognizing those who are serving our community in various ways. Tonight's community hero is Meta Ellis. With Pride Month only a few weeks away, it is fitting that tonight we honor Meta Ellis, Director of Montgomery Pride United and a lifelong activist for human and animal rights in Montgomery. Just last weekend, we honor her parents, the Reverend Robert and Jenny Gratz, who worked relentlessly for the rights and equity of all people. Krista, if you will come up from the advertiser, to say just a little bit more about tonight's honoree.
Thank you, city council members, Mayor Reed and the Beasley Allen Law Firm for partnering with the advertiser on our monthly community hero series. My name is Krista Johnson, and I'm here to recognize April's community hero, Meta Ellis. Meta is the director of Montgomery Pride United and co-founder of the Ruston Community Center. She is known for consistently showing up and putting in the work necessary to help those in need throughout our community. It was said that among her many gifts is her ability to see the potential in others and help nurture that. The daughter of the late Robert and Jenny Gratz, Meta was raised to serve, and she's dedicated her life to doing so. Her impact and contributions to Montgomery have made it a better place, and for that, she is a community hero.
Came over at Montgomery Pride United at the Ruston Community Center. Would you guys stand up? This is just some of the awesome people that I work with.[840.12][840.12](applause) We got Fang Miles, my wife Emma McDaniel Ellis, and our good friend LD Sykes. And we've got, we've got other people on their way here, but haven't arrived yet. But anyway, we're an awesome team of folks. We work with the community, and we do the very best we can for everybody out there.
Thank you.[864.56][864.56](applause) All right. While we're recognizing community heroes like Meta, we certainly want to, at this time, recognize those that have been trailblazers in our community. And there are two people I want to highlight, one in memoriam, and that is Dr. Edward D. Willis. And his family is here with us this evening. And I want to just read a little bit about Dr. Willis, because I think it's, it's important that we recognize those who really have contributed much in, in, to this community, sometimes not always at, at the most visible and vocal positions, but have added tremendous service. Dr. Willis was resident in Montgomery for more than 50 years. He was born in August 1940, the sixth of seven children of Eugene Willis and Rosetta Gordon Willis of Selma. After earning an undergraduate degree from Tuskegee Institute, he earned a doctorate from Tuskegee School of Veterinary Medicine in 1966. He opened Willis Animal Clinic in 1975, becoming the very first African-American licensed veterinarian to practice and own a veterinary hospital in Montgomery, Alabama. Like me, Dr. Willis didn't just want to be the first, he worked to be the best. In doing so, he broke down barriers and inspired generations to come. Commissioned as a captain in the U.S. Army, his military service included a tour of duty in Vietnam with the veterinary corps. He retired at the rank of lieutenant colonel in 2000, having been recognized with several awards and medals during his distinguished career. And what I'd like to do at this time is to read the proclamation that we have from the office of the mayor to the Willis family. I'm going to ask if you all, please come up at this time. City Montgomery, Alabama Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas Dr. Edward Donald Willis, a highly honored and respected citizen of Montgomery, Alabama, transitioned into eternal rest on March 6th, 2021. And whereas Dr. Edward Donald Willis was the first African-American veterinarian to practice and own an animal hospital in Montgomery. And whereas Dr. Willis was born on August 17th, 1940, and was the sixth of seven children born to the late Isaac Eugene Willis and Rosetta Gordon Willis of Selma, Alabama. And whereas a graduate of Hudson High School at the age of 16, Dr. Willis received an undergraduate degree from Tuskegee Institute in 1961 and earned his doctorate from Tuskegee Institute's School of Veterinary Medicine in 1966. Whereas Dr. Willis was commissioned as a captain in the United States Army and served a tour of duty in Vietnam with the veterinary corps and assigned to the United States Army Reserve and Air Force Reserve and an active duty post at the Pentagon during Operation Desert Storm. And whereas upon his retirement from the military in 2000, Lieutenant Colonel Willis was recognized with several awards and medals for his distinguished career. And whereas Dr. Willis was a resident of Montgomery for more than 50 years and opened Willis Animal Clinic in 1975, providing care for animals from a trailer until he built the current location on Mobile Highway. And whereas Dr. Willis earned the respect, admiration, and high regard of all with whom he came into contact, and our community sustained a great loss in his death. Now therefore, I, Stephen L. Reed, Mayor of the City of Montgomery, Alabama, wish to commemorate the life of Dr. Edward Donald Willis and his legacy by this proclamation and recognition of Dr. Willis's contributions to our community, and hereby express deep appreciation for his service and extend to his family our sincere sympathy upon his passing. All right. We've got one more, then I know Councilman McGinnis has one person very known in the community he would like to also honor. Want to, this time, honor one person for great work, and that is Felicia Pickett. Felicia is a security officer with the Transit Management of Montgomery. However, recently, Felicia went above and beyond the call of duty by saving a life. God put Felicia in the right place at the right time, and this impeccable time meant that she was able to talk a resident out of committing suicide. Suicide, we know, has tremendous impact, not only on families, but on the friends of those who are dealing with many stressors and many issues and challenges. Often in our community, we do not have enough resources to help those with some of those challenges, and we ask people to fill in the breach. However, this is one that we couldn't have imagined. But thanks to her quick actions and steady and calm and reassuring presence, that resident is still with us and their family today. For that, we honor Felicia Pickett. Please come up to the floor, please.[1301.83][1301.83](applause) I'm sorry, I thought she made it in. Okay. Well, I'm sorry about that. We want to certainly acknowledge her in her absence, and we'll make sure that she gets this certificate of recognition for doing what she did, and we really, really appreciate her involvement and putting herself in that responsibility. God put her in the place she chose to accept the responsibility, and for that, we're grateful, as is the family. At this time, Council McGinnis, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. President, I have a few words honoring Bud Skinner, a local hero. Bud Skinner opened Jubilee Seafood in 1984 and owned and operated Bud's and Captain Harry's in Cloverdale for many years as well. Bud was a friend to all and a leader in Cloverdale for decades with a heart to serve. He had a high bar of excellence for his craft. He was also a resident of District Seven, Hillwood, to be specific, and donated to many causes benefiting his neighborhood without anyone knowing he was a servant leader. That's how great Bud was. We want to honor Bud and his legacy by presenting this memorial certificate on the behalf of the mayor and city council to his family and close friends. Thank you for the memories, Bud. So if y'all can gather here, we'll take a big picture, but thank you so much for being
Okay. Mr. President, turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Glenn, you have something?
Yes, sir. Coming out of the special committee, Madam Clerk, do you want to read it, what this is, is our longevity bonus?
Resolution authorizing longevity pay for employees as budget permits.
Does the council have any questions or concerns?
This goes to the budget, the budget here?
Yes, sir, and it'll be every, Mr. President, it'll be every, every year we'll have to vote on this, as long as there's money in the budget, but what it'll be done is it'll be done around Christmas time for our employees, and it's for all employees across the board.
Good idea, okay. Any motion to spin rules?
Move spin rules.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Very good.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Before, before we get in, we get into our speech, and I wanted to address the council and the mayor.
You finna give a speech?
Well, yeah, just, just a small one. Huh? I was disappointed in, a couple of weeks ago, how we handled the two police officer shootings. We did not have a press conference as a city, and we didn't come out and beat the drums and ask for swift action, and we have not given an update on those two officers. And, you know, Mayor, I applaud you on your, the Stop the Violence campaign this coming weekend, but until we as a society stop discriminating against our police officers, not because the color of their skin, but because the color of their uniform, we're going to always have these problems. And I wanted to thank y'all from the bottom of my heart, what you guys do. But I just think we need to be more proactive in our police department, and we need to show support, now more than ever, and that's my two cents.
Can I, can I say something? Can I say something? Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Well, Mr. Pruitt, I, I appreciate, I think, the spirit in which you bring those comments, but you had a councilman, Ronde Mitchell, who went to the hospital, actually, he beat me there, getting there, Chief Finley and other leadership was there. We, we talked with both of the, the officers. Quite frankly, I wasn't interested in any grandstanding, I wasn't interested in any PR out of that as much as I was just the safety and well-being of those officers and those that worked with them. We stayed in contact with them to follow up, and I think, you know, when you have a councilman, someone who represents the body as well as the mayor, trying to get over there and see how they're doing, they, they were very appreciative, their families were appreciative of that and the outreach that we made with them. Now, you know, to the degree that there are challenges in this city, as there are in most communities like this across this country, there certainly are, and we're, we're having those conversations, and we're trying to come up with tactics every day where that's concerned. So no one takes lightly what the men and women in our police department do, no one takes lightly what they sacrifice every day to protect the city. And so when someone is put in danger, whether it's an accident, whether it's a chase, or certainly whether it's a shooting, we take all those matters very seriously and we try to respond accordingly. So I think that we had a very good response and representation. It wasn't public, and it didn't need to be public, and I wouldn't have made it public but for the comments that you brought up here tonight. But you had members of the body, and you had myself in the hospital room while one of the officers was still there, recovering and, and getting treated. So I think there was adequate response to that, and there certainly has been adequate communication to our leadership about what steps we can take to reduce violence, not only where our officers are concerned, their danger and safety, but that of the general public. So Councilman, I apologize for that.
No. You said enough for me.
No, and, and listen, I understand, and I too have spoke to him numerous times on the telephone. All I'm saying is that, and this is Glenn's opinion, this ain't anybody's opinion up here, that we should have asked for the maximum penalty, swift justice, because if it would have been roles reversed, and God help us, if a police officer would have shot somebody, we'd have done that. All I'm saying is, let's be fair to both sides. That's all I'm saying. We have two officers that were hurt, and that's it. And I'm in, that's, I'm into that.
Okay. All right, but first item, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, item one, ordinance amending chap- Mr. President, item one, ordinance amending chapter twelve, uh, to provide for abatement of abandoned and obsolete signs.
I understand we're gonna carry that over?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm gonna carry that over. Uh, I was informed today that we still have some tweaking to do, so we're gonna carry it over two more weeks.
Okay.
Item two, ordinance amending section three point fifteen of the Code of Ordinances, Entertainment District.
Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
I'm motion to suspend rules, on favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
We brought up some issues in the work session about this, so just some things we, you know, considering, when, when do we, will we address that before August or is, is it, this is it? Um, when it come to it? Will there be any more conversation about this or is this it?
You want me to address that, Mr. President? Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Graham. Basically, what we're, we're talking about, we, I think, um, Stacy said that we asked to do this in August. We're looking at trying to open up the city of Montgomery downtown with our entertainment district prior to July fourth. Uh, these are just some basic guidelines that we put out there based on some of the experiences that we had when it was, the entertainment district was open, uh, in the past. So these are some of the things that we needed to address and I think, uh, our attorney looked into some of these things that presented this ordinance before the city council. Now, you got some questions? I know you had a question about the receipts being, being an issue. I mean, I understand your point about, you know, I think Ms. Johnson said, well, you got multiple, one person buy for multiple people. You only had one person, how would you address that? That was a, a great question, you know, but one of the things about receipts, when we talked about the entertainment district, cause one of the issues that we had with people was bringing stuff down out of their trunk and doing everything not, I think this is like a deterrent, to say, hey, this is what we're gonna be looking for. Everything that we do is gonna be in enforcement of what we try to do downtown. Great points about trying to block off the entertainment district, we, I think Mayor Reed and his staff, we spoke about that with President Jim Wright about some of the things to control the traffic when you got this type of stuff going on and we did it in the past with, uh, I think we used to call it pub walks and different things where those wristbands comes in point. So this is just something to let the, uh, we, we're trying to come on the other side of COVID to try to open up and, you know, generate some activities going on downtown in the city of Montgomery.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Calhoun.
Okay.
That didn't really answer my question.
I forgot your question.
My question was, is this it? Like...
This is it.
This is it, this is it. I mean, this is it. What else would you like to add?
It's a new trial, in my opinion, it's a trial.
I think maybe somebody should have asked me that before we got here, in a sense, when it come to that, but anyway, I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm for it. Let me, let me be clear about that. I don't have a problem with the opening it up, I just, I just...
When we pass, we can back off, okay?
Say it again?
When we pass, we can take away, okay?
Oh, so we can just tweak it a little bit at some other point if we need to?
If we have to, I think the reality, I was trying to open up downtown again and give it an opportunity and, and if it doesn't work, we can always back off. We did, we did before, okay?
And we backed off before because it wasn't working.
Okay, we back.
Try and see.
I mean, I'm with you.
All right. Do we suspend rules on this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we suspend rules.
You in motion?
Move to adopt.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Council.
Item three, resolution declaring a day of prayer for the city of Montgomery on Sunday, June the sixth.
Glenn, I think you just go back to the, what we're talking about, trying to make sure that people in Montgomery understand that we got an issue that we all concerned about and the crime issue and this will be a day of prayer on the, what day is that?
June the sixth.
June sixth?
Sunday, June the sixth.
Okay. You in motion to suspend rules on this, please?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item four, resolution renaming King Hill Community Center to the Hilton L. Tracy Larkin Community Center.
You in motion to suspend rules on this? Motion?
Yeah.
Motion to suspend rules?
Uh, motion to suspend the rules?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
You motion to adopt?
All right, move to adopt.
There you go. On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
I just want to, I just want to say here, thank you so much for doing this. Tracy would have been proud and happy for you to have her, but thank you for doing this. That was kind of his love right there, so. All right, numbers?
Item five, review of unsightly conditions at the car wash at thirty-four oh nine Woodley Road.
Okay. Who's got, who, 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 let's see. Representative of the Woodley, uh, car wash on Woodley Road?
Yes, uh...
Yes, sir. Put the mic up so we can hear you, please, and your name, sir?
Sorry, I'm new to it. Uh, but...
Your name, sir, first?
Uh, Joshua Walters. I'm on, I'm on his behalf of Bob and Shpatel.
Okay.
Cause I'm, I'm leasing a building now. Um, but I came down to talk to, was it you, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, about the car wash bin, like the dumping of the trash, all of that's getting resolved now because I'm, I'm the new leasing, so as far as all the dumping of the trash is gonna stop because I had a rebuild, um, I'm ordering a gate, like the little park gate, and so all of that's gonna stop mainly while like the trash was being dumped because that wasn't in my budget back then, but I was getting all the electrical and all the, the sewer and stuff built, but now all that's been taken care of and I, it won't get dirty again.
Yes, sir.
How, how long have you had this?
Probably like a month.
Oh, a month? Oh, okay.
And I got a picture of it, um, like spotless now?
Yeah, and that's what I, we just wanted to hear what were your plans because like I said, um, we had videos, like time you cleaned it up, somebody was right there behind you. So, you know, I, I've been getting so many calls, but as long as you're able to address it and I can have something to tell them, I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay. That's all?
That's it.
Very good, thank you.
Item six, do you want to withdraw it?
I wanted to draw it.
Number seven and eight would be withdrawn, he's taken care of that, so seven, eight withdrawn. Number nine?
Application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Aldi at seventy-three forty East Chase Parkway.
Representative Aldi, please. Glenn, you opening up?
We're opening up June tenth.
Okay, your name for the record, please.
My name is Alexandria Kitchens.
Very good. This is a public hearing, anyone who wants to speak against this item, please come forward or call in on the phone. Do we have any phone calls? I hope not. Seeing none, I declare public hearing has been held, by the public council and the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Good luck with the new location. Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as One Stop at fifty-seven eighty Woodmere Boulevard.
Representative One Stop, on, on Woodmere? See if I got anybody?
Seaton.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Patel? Oh, yeah, me, oh, okay. Your name for the record, please?
Arul Ben Pati.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone who likes to speak against this item, call in or you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, hearing none, this public hearing has been held, by the public council, you in motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir?
Move to suspend the rules?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with the business, ma'am.
Item eleven, application for special retail, more than thirty days liquor license, doing business as lations for your occasions at one sixty-five at Eastern Boulevard.
Representative for latium, this item, please, latium for your occasions? Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, come forward. I got a question. This is, is this part of Ubar?
No.
What, what are you gonna do, please?
This is an event venue for...
The event, event center?
An event venue slash retail.
Huh?
An event venue slash rental hall.
Okay, okay, all right. We know the police are in that area watching this thing, these, these places have tendency to get, get out of hand, anyway, okay, that's, we know what it is.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Is this a rental facility?
Yeah.
You gonna be just renting it out for parties or...
Baby showers, events, graduation.
And what's the loc, I, I see the address is one sixty-five East...
Eastern Boulevard, yes.
Is that in the shopping center?
Yes.
What, what is, what is...
Stacy, it's next door. It's next door to the Ubar.
Is it next door?
So is it in my place? I mean, where, where exactly is it?
It's two doors down from my place, uh-huh.
Okay.
I need your name for the record, please.
What's your name?
Chris Thompson.
Chris what?
Thompson.
Thompson. Pull your microphone down. You, yeah.
Chris Thompson.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got a question? This is a public hearing, anyone who likes to talk against this item or call in on the item, please let me know.
I have one more question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Calhoun.
Uh, what's, what, what will be your hours of operation?
Pardon?
Your hours of operation?
The hours of operation from Sunday through Thursday would be from nine AM to twelve and on Fridays and Saturdays would be nine to one.
I declare public hearing has been held, by the public council, Mr. Calhoun?
Is that dependent upon whoever rents it and what they need it for?
Correct, yes.
Anybody else? Let me just say that we, we've had a problem with Ubar and you're moving in next to Ubar and our police would be watching because we don't want any more shootings and bad stuff and, uh, so we'll be watching what happens there and we can give you a license, we can sure take it away real quick, Mike, okay?
Okay.
And, and don't take it as a threat, we just, you just gotta know what you're walking into and understand how we feel about it because you scare us from what you're doing because we've had some issues with other places like yours where we had problems, so I want to make sure you don't, you know what you're walking into, okay?
Okay.
All right. I declare public hearing has been held, by the public council, and I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Good luck with the business and...
Thank you.
Item twelve, application for a lounge retail liquor class two package license, doing business as Crown Tobacco and Package Store, forty-three forty Narroling Road.
Representative Crown?
Hi, my name is Mohammed Sonet and I'm applying for Crown Tobacco Liquor Store and I have some picture to inside my building, if you'd like to see, uh, I have that, I'd like to show you guys right now what is the inside look like.
Okay, go ahead, show me, come on. Is Glenn, is Glenn here?
No.
Near LA Road, this is yours? Near LA Road. What's the convenience store with the...
Oh, I'm good, I seen it, I'm good.
You seen it, you good with it?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, that's good, everybody good with it? Okay. This is a public hearing, anyone who likes to speak against this item, please come forward. You want to speak against it?
Good evening, my name is Angela Extrum, I'm with Seth Johnson Neighborhood Association, I'm the association president. Transparency means a lot to me and also to our association and communication is the key to success. We've had an opportunity to go to the roundtable with Mr. Sonic in reference to his business. We met as an association and we are in favor of him getting liquor license. He is our business partner, he's working with our community and taking our community back.
Very good, thank you. I declare public hearing has been held, by the public council, you in motion?
Mr. President, you had a question for me, Brandon?
I got a question, Ms. Calhoun.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is that?
On Narroling Road, uh, right adjacent to the, uh, Pace Card Grocery Store? Cash savings.
Looks nice.
All right, let me just speak on this and I think that the association came, uh, about six months ago, seven months ago, uh, and they was not in favor of this, but he came in and renovated a building that was, uh, vacant, uh, a lot of homeless people was laying around and so he had invested money in this place and it's looked a hundred percent, uh, improvement. It's an improvement and they worked together on some things and not only is it a convenience store, he's now, uh, asking for a liquor license to do a package store and, you know, I'm, I'm with supporting whatever the community wants, uh, he worked with it. I'd rather for the business to be opable than to be vacant and so I, I'll support this.
All right, you in motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
On favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with the business, sir.
Let me change that vote, it's seven, are you a no voter abstaining?
Abstain.
Abstain, one abstention.
Okay.
Item thirteen, application for a restaurant retail liquor license, doing business as Dreamland Barbecue, seventy-nine hundred Vaughn Road, Suite two hundred.
Representative Dreamland, please. Oh, it's you.
Yes, sir.
Your name for everybody, yeah?
Uh, Bob Parker.
Bob Parker. This is a public hearing, anyone who likes to speak against this item, please come forward or call in on the phone. Seeing none, hearing none, I declare public hearing has been held, by the public council, you in motion?
Move to suspend the rules?
You in motion to suspend rules, on favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
On favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Uh, we're shooting for around the ninth of June, we just gotta find a few more employees, so...
That's what I understand, you having trouble getting employees?
Thank you.
I said, good luck.
Item fourteen, appeal of proposed demolition of seven thirty-two Clinton Street by Michael Williams.
Okay. Is Mr. Williams here? Mr. Williams? Apparently he's not here, okay? Are you here? Yeah, come forward.
Uh, I bought this house from the state, uh, I think it was twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen and, uh, I've been working on it, but I started, I stopped working on it and then I had to stop because I had a fine on it and I couldn't, I couldn't work on it if I owed the city some money, so I stopped and I started back, uh, twenty-twenty-one and I received a letter from Mr. Witcher, or Whi, someone from the city. Anyway, I started back working on the house and, uh, it went smoothly, we communicated over the summer and everything was going smooth and the night Alabama played Ohio State, I was diagnosed with lung cancer at the VA Hospital and that just turned everything around. I, you know, I had to stop.
Well, I understand your situation, but you've had this house, do you actually own this house?
Sir?
Do you actually own the house or is it still state owned? Is it still under tax lien?
No, I paid it off.
So you have, you have a deed to the house now?
Yes, sir. Here's, I got a copy of where I paid the house off.
When was that? Did you pay that off? When did you pay the house off?
Mr. Michael, yes, sir, or we, we talked on the phone and, um, I drove by, uh, yesterday and called you back and left you a voicemail, hopefully, hopefully you got it, but it is, it is, uh, in not great shape, uh, the house and Brandon, um, do you have anything to add on this case?
We've actually, we've got some photos that we could show of it, um, but we, we, uh, first made contact with Mr. Williams, it was actually in September of two thousand and nineteen is when we first, uh, became aware of the structure. Um, like Councilman McGinnis said, it's just a, a number of structural issues, um, there's several pictures of it from behind, where you can see, obviously it's, it's missing all electrical components, um, the back was actually partially collapsed.
The back of it?
That's the back of it, yes, sir.
I tore all of that out.
And then even within what's left of the home, you'll see a bunch of rotten and deteriorated studs, other structural framing members, uh, the, the seal joists, the, uh, floor joists, you can see, like I said, have, have rotted, um, and we did.
I tore all of that out.
Well, it's got nothing, you hadn't replaced anything.
Excuse me?
You hadn't replaced anything. Bad thing.
Were you planning to rebuild it, or are you trying to tear it down?
I can't imagine.
All of those boards that are painted like that have been replaced. Those are new boards on there, and the reason it's colored like that is because my budget, I bought primer from Home Depot. It was cheaper by the, by the price. I did that. And those, all of those boards are replaced. The house was burnt. I replaced those one by, those one bys. All of those are, that's the house when I bought it.
Mr. Williams, do you understand, I mean, I think from a city point, we are concerned about safety issues, and children tend to play, and we know you wouldn't have, you know, but children tend to play, and if one got inside of that building, because the back is wide open, it's not closed to keep them out at all, that's, that's just unsafe. If something happened, it'd be just somebody is at a loss without a child because they went in this building. We understand they shouldn't be there, but that can happen. You know how we are as children. We can do that. And that's the reason why the city of Montgomery is in, looking into this matter.
I cut all that back out before I got sick. I was about to put that back together.
So, Mr. Williams, you're your own contractor?
Well, I was doing the work before I got sick, so after they talked, called me and told me, you know, what they wanted to do, I asked them, would it be all right if I get somebody else to go in there and do it?
Well, Brandon, have we approved the demolition yet?
No, sir. It's actually on the next item.
It's on the agenda tonight. Then how long do you have after that for him to fix it up?
Well, the issue we had with Mr. Williams, like I said, when we got in touch with him in September of 19, he had a permit from 2014 that had long expired.
2014?
From 2014 is when he initially started making his repairs to it.
You've been dealing with this house since 2014?
No, sir. I started, I got the permit, and I got the house.
In 14, yes, sir.
And like I said, it was, I had to pay the lien off. And after I paid the lien off, I waited a while, and I started on it.
I can't imagine your neighbors like you over there.
Excuse me?
The neighborhood's not, you're not helping that neighborhood at all, that house. Okay.
Mr. Williams, do you have a contractor today?
I got someone to start on the house.
And how long will it take them to bring this house up to par?
Well, I'm not saying that I can bring it all the way, like with electrical and the plumbing, but as far as closing it in and making it safe where nobody can get in, I could do that in about 45 days.
Mr. Williams, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Mr. Williams, what's your plan with this house? I know you're saying you want to revamp it. I think the property, when we're looking at the condition with the rotted wood and those things, the property might be more valuable to you than this house.
It will.
Do we just push it down?
Well, then I would have, I mean, like I said, I can get this done. I can't do it, but I can pay somebody to do it.
Okay. Well, I mean, he's had it since 2014.
All I'm asking for is a chance to show what I can do.
I understand, and I'm very sympathetic of your situation, but it's been many years, and we, I drove by the property, and there's just, I mean, it's really hard to come back from, from that.
I can't see how you waste your time and money.
I have a question, Mr. McGinnis. If, if Mr. Hodges, I mean, it takes a minute anyway. It's not like we vote on it tonight, and they go do it tomorrow, so we get that, granted that. If he's saying 45 days, he can have it secure, and even though we go ahead and vote on it tonight, we grant it tonight, if we have it secure, can we always, can we come back in?
Well, if we get it approved this evening, he would still have the opportunity to appeal to the clerks, or excuse me, the circuit court, just to wipe out the approval. Our issue, the last time I spoke to Mr. Williams, was, I know he says he has a contractor now, but at the time we spoke a couple of weeks ago, due to health issues and funding issues, he had no definitive plan or timeline of when he would be able to do any structural repairs to the house.
Yeah.
And that was what we informed him of at that time, is that's what we've been looking for since September of 2019, is some sort of definitive plan of repairs, a permit to be obtained, and then those repairs to be made. And unfortunately, to date, it still sits as is.
Well, Mr. Williams, you understood that, that we're going to approve this tonight. We're going to approve for them to tear it down tonight, but you can always appeal it to a higher court, which grants you a little more time as well. And if you can show that court the improvement you've made by the time you get in front of them, you may be able to save your structure without having it torn down, but you've got to...
Do I, what do I do? Go get another permit and start?
No, yeah, you'll need to. I don't know if they will grant him another permit.
Well, it goes back prior to him ever being able to obtain the permit. We still need the, like I said, a definitive plan of repairs, a definitive timeline, a definitive cost estimate, and that's what, last time we spoke, he was unable to buy due to, like I said, the health and...
So, even if he appealed it, he still wouldn't be able to start on it because he wouldn't be able to get a permit?
Well, like I said, if he had, if he has a contractor that presents us with a scope of work, an acceptable scope of work, a timeline, and a cost estimate, then we would definitely review it, and if it's, like I said, approvable, then we might with this.
So, he said if your contractor show up down there and tell them, you've paid them, they're going to work on it, this is the timeframe, they'd be willing to give them a permit, but you still have to possibly appeal it to keep them from going out there because we're going to approve the demolition today.
Okay.
That makes sense.
We heard your appeal. Thank you for here.
You got, the lawyer wants to speak to you.
I spoke to Hans Farren. And you can correct me if I'm wrong. He couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted to make sure the council understood that if Mr. Williams does have a plan and communicates that with inspections, they're not going to tear it down. They'll continue to work with him, even if the council approves it, which they're asking that they do tonight. As long as he, he communicates with them and comes up with a viable plan, then they're not going to go forward with the demolition.
Okay. That makes sense, Mr. Williams? That makes sense? You can handle that?
Yes.
Okay. Just make sure your contractor calls.
Very good. Thank you for being here, and we'll move on to the next item. Yes, sir.
You need to deny the appeal.
You will have to come to the mic, sir, so we can hear you, if you can. Can you?
Are you with Mr. Williams?
We're going to help him out, okay? Thank you. What you need?
Call in what's going.
Why me?
Come on, put the microphone.
We need.
Give us your name.
I'm John Hunter.
Okay.
I've been knowing Mr. Williams a long time. I used to have a house in the area, and he's been in that community for a long time. There's more house, worse condition in that area than, than he's doing now.
We're going to make sure he has an opportunity, okay?
Well, what I wanted to say is, don't destroy his desire to build that building. Now, he's not going, he's not able to contend with y'all because it happened to me and my property. And it's not fair to him at this point. He's about 80 years old. Let him go ahead. You got worse property in that area. Let him do what he can do, please. You don't need to do that.
Okay, we got him stood up for...
Thank you, sir.
All right, next item.
Mr. President, y'all need to act on the appeal, either deny it or approve it. You need to act on the appeal.
Okay, I mean, a motion to...
Motion to approve?
No, a motion to deny.
Deny the appeal.
Motion to deny, thank you.
Hold on, please, raise your hand.
Wait a minute.
Anybody else?
That was unanimous, okay.
Unanimous, okay. All right, next item.
Item 15, pursuant to Section 1153v1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed locations.
Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Hold on, please, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item 16, resolution assessing the cost of abatement of unsafe structures on various lots.
Need a motion to suspend the rule, but rest remain, remain to the agenda?
So, move.
Hold on, please, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt 16?
Move to adopt.
Hold on, please, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item 17, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Move to adopt.
Hold on, please, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. And counsel, I do have contingency funds that have come in late, and I don't have the mayor's approval, so I will need these.
Mr. President, I have a question before we go to the contingency fund, if we may. Chief, you still here? Got a question about the parking lot in front of Empire. It seems to be a weekend event going on with the car shows and drag stripping. I'm trying to see how we, are we acting to this and what we do?
Yeah, we have a plan in place, not only that location, a couple of other locations, and I will have a conversation with you offline.
Okay.
But we are in contact with those owners.
Okay.
And I will say this, it's the last couple of weeks, and I know it, they have them coming up, as far as these car vans and these car shows and things like that, these moving caravans. And so, we have a plan in place that is a full court press this week that we're going to act upon that. And so, we look forward to that, and then we're going to monitor some of these club locations as well.
Okay.
And so, I'll just pull you and Rondé to side.
You got one. Chief, we got one on corner of the next racetrack on Eastern Boulevard. Call Michael, Eastern Boulevard, they got another crowd gathered there on Saturday night. I guess that's that moving caravan you're talking about?
Right, right. And so, and so, we identifying at least three, and so, if there is any more, you know, we're just going to put that in the mix, but we just have to do a more strategic plan to really address those issues.
And chief, I'm going to just say this on your behalf, and I think some of this stuff is owner's responsibility too, you know, when people popping up in these parking lots and you're not reporting, and you're just allowing it to happen, so you become part of the problem, so.
So, so, so part of the plan is being a little more proactive, aggressive, and so, we're going to be out there, and so, we already made those contacts, and that we're going to really put in place this this weekend.
All right. You know, you make a good point, Mr. Calhoun. These properties are vacated, there's nobody on, and the owner is just letting things do whatever. Maybe we need to do some kind of inspections on them and give them, turn them over to inspections, and then we maybe bring them in front of us as a...
So-called.
As a violation of some kind. Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, anybody else? All right, Madam Clerk.
For District 4, $2,000 to King's Canvas Gallery. 2,000, for District 5, 1,000 to West Alabama Jubilee Community Association. For District 7, 1,000 to Makoah, 500 to Ridgecrest Southern Meadows Neighborhood Association. And mayor, these are all vendors.
Anybody else?
No, 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 I got something.
Go ahead, Randy.
No, no, I have something else to ask for. You go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right.
Six, four.
$1,500, Madam Clerk, to Bell Station Neighborhood Association.
Bell Station, okay.
And $1,000 to Makoah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that it?
I have something.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I have something.
Johnson, you got something?
I wanted to do 400 to Park Manor Neighborhood Association.
Park Meadow?
Mm-hmm. And it's another event that is coming up. It's for the, you all help me with the name of it. It's for the first responders and teachers.
We, we got that approved.
What name? I wasn't...
That's that email we got trying to, they're going to have a rally for the teachers and first responders, and it's being put on by, I think, Cultural Arts Department.
There are several things that were combined, and we were trying to figure out who the money was supposed to go to. We didn't know if it's MPS or exactly who it's going to go to.
They had approved some money for that, and I, we didn't have a place to go with it. So, anyway, we need to let Cultural Arts find out about that. There's something they're doing, I believe.
Mr. President, I got it.
Yes, sir.
Never mind. I'll come back to it.
All right. Anybody else? Need to adopt, need to most adopt this?
No, not about, I want to do, I'm going to do to, I think it was Jeff Davis, $1,000, and also...
Okay, it'll have to go to MPS?
Yes.
For Jeff Davis. Is there anything particular you want to put on the check?
It was for the band.
For band?
And I'm doing $500 to, what was it? Spring Park and Bells Me, Plantation Estates, $500, and Els Me, $500.
All right, Mr. President.
And did, I need to ask a question about Mrs. Johnson. Is she going to, Ms. Johnson, are you going to?
We're trying to see if any of these, these, what were the things that's been involved? Are they vendors? We're assuming that you can handle it.
Well, see, we don't know who it's supposed to go to, who's in charge of it.
Just back off of that till we get an approval.
You want to just back off of that and do it another time?
Yeah, it's just...
Okay, that clears what I needed. Okay.
It's not clear how it's worked out.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Calhoun.
Ms. Blaylock, $1,000 to the Rosemary Neighborhood Association.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Anybody else? Need a vote and a motion to accept these, approve these?
Mayor, these are all vendors with the city.
Okay.
Mr. President, move for approval.
Hold on, please, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Anybody got anything else?
One other thing. Asking for another committee. I work with Neighborhood Services, trying to get together my apartment complexes. I have so many apartment complexes that I'm having safety issues. I would like to have a committee so we can talk about those safety issues because I'm having problems on a daily with my apartment complex. They wouldn't voluntarily come to that meeting that Amanda Miller and Row Tyres and myself tried to have with them, so I want to try to get them in front of me so I can talk to them and see what plans they have.
Okay, I believe. You and Mr. Calhoun got it. I know he, I know Mr. Pruitt's got part of his. So, let's have you and Mr. Calhoun and Mr. Pruitt.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
I need clarification. Need who? chaired by Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Calhoun, and who?
Huh?
Who's the third person?
Mr. Pruitt.
Mr. Pruitt.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, it's music education.
Meeting adjourned.